We may even need to wait to hear from each other. Oh, Scott, you may need to stand up because I don't know if he can see you.
He said that he could see me.
Okay, let's just be careful.
He said he could see me. Actually, he did say.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the board of this meeting of the seventeenth of June twenty twenty one. City of Nashville.
Mayor Donches. Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclair.
Present.
Adam Varley. Maggie Harper.
Present.
Alderman David Tenza. Alderman Jan Schmidt. Dan Hudson. Edward Weber.
Here.
Bob Volender. Here. Larry Hirsch.
Present.
Two, three, four, five, six. Six, nothing.
Okay, serial fore. All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Leclair. I'm the chair of the City of Nashville Planning Board. And again, this is the seventeenth of June twenty twenty one planning board meeting. This evening's meeting of the city planning board will be conducted in a hybrid format, so we need it accessible in person in room two oh eight at Nashville City Hall located at two twenty nine Main Street, Nashville Metro. And via Zoom at the link posted on Hall publicly posted meeting agenda. Members of the public and representatives of the applicant have been encouraged to attend the meeting via Zoom, or they may attend in person at City Hall. Real time public comment during the meeting can be addressed to the board utilizing Zoom or at City Hall in room two oh eight. If any individual has any problem accessing the meeting, please go ahead and call six zero three five eight nine three one one five. They'll help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, being as above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note the board will continue to take votes via roll call. And the board of the planning department thank everybody for their understanding. Okay, first up, we have minutes from June third twenty twenty one. If anybody from the board has a chance to take with it these minutes or want to make a motion, just whether they're ready for us to receive as written or as any amendments.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June third twenty twenty one.
Case your motion, members of all of you, are approved that June third twenty twenty one minutes is written. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Okay, Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Volender.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Minutes six zero.
Okay, so those passes. Next up, communications.
You've been members of the board. Three items of correspondence reported to the board in advance of this evening's meeting. The first is a memo from Deputy Corporation Counselor, Councilor Celia Leonard dated June eleventh twenty twenty one relative to R twenty one one forty seven. The second is a revised deed document dated June eleventh twenty twenty one related to R twenty nine one forty seven. The third item is an email chain between myself and Brian Pratt of Hudson O'Neal related to Nashville landing applications. Those are dated June fifteenth twenty twenty one.
Okay, very cool. Reporter, Chairman, do you have any ideas on anything?
Yes, we had NRPC yesterday. They approved the FYI budget for the coming year, and we basically talked about bike and bus routes throughout the region, not just Nashville or other, I mean, but they showed did a PowerPoint, a really good PowerPoint, how people are trying to get, want to have more bike routes and use safe bike routes and how and a discussion about how to do better safe routes so that people don't get killed on bicycle paths or bicycle sharing the road.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, as far as our agenda is concerned, we have the three old business subdivision plans, site plan, both landing and dashware. Everyone on board, sort of corresponded and has a problem that they're asking us requested a continuance to July fifteenth, noon, seven P M. So in lieu of that, I just entertain a motion. I don't think that any of you can take it off the table, but someone will make a motion as to whether to continue these to the fifteenth at seven. Mr. Ballinger.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to continue the three cases associated with the landing project. A motion to continue the following cases to July fifteenth twenty twenty one. Old Business Subdivision Plan A twenty one dash zero zero two eight. Old Business Site Plan twenty one dash zero zero two nine. And Old Business Site Plan A twenty one dash zero zero six two.
Okay, so we have that motion, Mr. Ballinger, to continue those three cases until the July fifteenth seven P M meeting.
Second.
We have a second on that. Try Mr. Weber. Any further discussion by the board? Let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Volender.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, thanks a lot. I'm gonna take next up the two referrals located on their other business, number two and number three. First up is gonna be the referral from Board of Aldermen of the fourth position for street discontinuance. This is an old Grotton Road portion. This was postponed to the June third twenty twenty one meeting. So I don't think we have to take these into jurisdiction or anything. So does somebody here speak on that? Mr. Weskey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer of Wyner Bennett in Nashville, one eleven Concord Street, representing Edstone Properties, Inc., which is the petitioner for the street discontinuance and hopeful benefited party on the resolution R twenty one dash one forty seven. I'll speak a little bit, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Should not be very lengthy presentation. With me on Zoom are Tom Zajak and Hainer Swanson. He's the project engineer for Terrell Farm. Lee Gagnon, also at Hainer Swanson, is the project land surveyor. And Jaren Slattery, who's president of Edstone Properties, Inc. So before you, Mr. Chairman, are two matters. Our petition for street discontinuance for portions of Old Grotton Road, we call it, and then the resolution that's proposed to allow the city to convey whatever right, title, and interest, if any, it has in these street discontinued portions to Edstone Properties. The board, I think, has before it, the petition has seen a copy of that. There were some plans that went with it. The primary plan was a discontinuance plan that shows one of the two areas of discontinuance, and thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for putting that up. I'll address that in a moment. You also have the memorandum and revised deed from attorney Celia Leonard. She and I had communications about that documentation in the last couple of weeks. So the board, I'm sure, recalls the project. In December of two thousand nineteen, you approved a twenty-five unit conservation subdivision in the condominium form of ownership, single-family detached homes on this property in Grotton Road, north side of Grotton Road. The approval was extended, renewed in November of two thousand twenty, and now the development is underway. Work's been done, the road layout, I think, base pavement of road has been put in in the base, in the basic subdivision itself. The petition for discontinuance contemplates discontinuing two areas of Old Grotton Road. The plan that you're seeing on the screen, in which you already had a copy up in the petition itself, shows an area called Discontinuance Area A, and this is the cross-lined area that's mostly this sort of elongated triangle you see along the north side of Grotton Road. This land is in the land area owned by Edstone Properties that constitutes Terrell Farm, and then a small little sliver of it as well to the left, as is pointed out. It turns out that in nineteen thirty seven, the state realigned Grotton Road to what we now see today. So when you go out on Grotton Road and what you see and you drive on, that plus the shoulders are the nineteen thirty seven layout of Grotton Road. But previously, literally back in seventeen ninety nine, discovered by Hainer Swanson and Lee Gagnon in the always extensive research they do in all their project, found that Old Grotton Road over this part of, the section of it on the Terrell Farm piece, went into these triangular areas that are pointed out. Because the realignment made them, the triangular areas unnecessary. They were no longer used for Grotton Road, of course, but they were never discontinued from what we could figure from all the research that was done. There's another area that we reference in the petition called Discontinuance Area B. We note that on the plan, as you can now see in the middle of the plan, but it's not plottable. That is, Mr. Gagnon, despite significant undertakings, simply could not locate it on the ground, if you will, on this piece of property. It's obviously not used. It's not locatable and frankly not usable, and there's no evidence of its use that he could find through research. But it was laid out in an eighteen forty seven Board of Selectmen undertaking, literally before Nashville was incorporated as a city, and was, and was laid out with a meets and bounds description, as we note in the petition, but simply not plottable. So what we seek is to discontinue both area, the discontinuance area A, the triangles with the dash lines, and discontinuance area B, the unplottable piece that the research discovered, but never was able to definitively locate. The areas we're seeking to discontinue are only areas on Edstone's property. We're not trying to discontinue old streets that are on another, or on a butter's property. They serve no function, as you can tell. Attorney Leonard and I discussed the question she had as to whether or not the city should reserve easements for utilities and sidewalks over these parcels. After her additional review of it, she came to the conclusion that was unnecessary. I think it's fairly obvious why, given the, the nature of these areas. And also note that Edstone has already granted to Penachuckan Ever Source water and sewer easements, excuse me, water and power easements for servicing Terrell Farm anyway. The Attorney Leonard did, however, recommend that the city consider requiring that Edstone grant a sidewalk easement over, it really becomes over two parcel, two portions of the property. You may recall in your approval process that there is going to be a sidewalk on a sort of the easterly part of the project along Grotton Road, but two components of the sidewalk, it doesn't show on this plan, but two components of the sidewalk are gonna be on the Terrell Farm property itself. The middle leg of it's gonna be in the Grotton Road right of way. So we fully understand and agree wholeheartedly to grant those sidewalk easements recommended by Attorney Leonard. We're going before the All-Demand Infrastructure Committee next week for public hearing, and hopefully before the full board for consideration of the petition and the resolution in July. So we would respectfully request that this board grant a favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen. As you know, that's the role you play in this particular type of application. We're certainly happy to answer questions of any kind. Myself, Mr. Zajak, Mr. Gagnon, and Mr. Slattery, as the board may wish to consider, and we thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thanks a lot. Any questions from the board in this, like I said, we can ask questions about, you know, other business, two more, three. On the board's side, anybody?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Westgate, was any consultation necessary with, with New Hampshire DOT with regard to the, the existing layout or the former layout, or in other words, are there any other interested parties other than the city and Edstone Property that are involved in this particular matter?
None, none to my knowledge. I will ask Mr. Zajak if during the approval process for Terrell Farm, whether there was any interaction with DOT relative to the street discontinuance matter.
Thank you.
Attorney Westgate, for the record, Tom Zajak, civil engineer with Hainer Swanson. Yeah, just to reiterate what, what Attorney Westgate said, there was no interaction with DOT over this particular section of roadway.
Thank you, Mr. Zajak.
Any other questions by the board? I don't know if there's anybody in the public that has any questions, comments on this? I hear none. I'll go ahead. So I think ladies and the board want to make a motion as to these two referrals. The first one, we proposed petition for street discontinuance. Then hopefully our motion would be for a favorable recommendation. Or available one, something to comment.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion for a favorable recommendation with regard to the referral from Bart Walter and proposed petition for street discontinuance of Old Grotton Road.
Okay, so we have that motion for a favorable recommendation for street discontinuance petition by Mr. Volender.
Go ahead, Mr. Westgate. Quick question, clarifying question. I would assume that recommendation includes the comments of Deputy Corporation Counselor Celia Leonard relative to the easement item.
Mr. Chair, would be happy to amend that motion.
Yes.
That would be suitable. Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to amend my motion to indicate that all comments in the June eleventh twenty, I believe it should say twenty twenty one, June eleventh twenty twenty one memo from Celia Leonard be incorporated as, as noted.
Okay, so we have that amended motion by Mr. Volender for the favorable recommendation with the comments from Leonard, June eleventh twenty twenty one. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that one?
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Volender.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, now regarding the, a referral to the Board of Aldermen of proposed R twenty one dash one forty seven. Anybody want to make a motion on that? Mr. Volender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the board makes a favorable recommendation from the Board of Aldermen proposed resolution R dash twenty one dash one forty seven authorizing the conveyance of discontinued portion of Old Grotton Road. Also incorporating the comments of Celia Leonard dated June eleventh twenty twenty one.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Volender for the favorable recommendation. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Volender.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thanks, Mr. Westgate, Mr. Zajak. So moving on with the agenda, we're gonna go back to, we have new business condition special use permits. We have no residential subdivision plans. We have a new business site plan, this is case number A twenty one dash zero one one three, our place owner. It was an application and acceptance approved amendment that NR one four eight zero. To terminate the existing parking easement agreement between the First Church of Christ Scientist and one fifteen Concord Street and establish a new parking easement for the seven parking spaces of Greeley Park Associates at one eleven Concord Street. And the property is located at one eleven Concord Street. So do we have a motion from the board in case of this application? Do you want to make a motion as to whether it's ready to take jurisdiction? Mr. Volender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business A twenty one dash zero one one three.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Volender. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Okay, let's get a roll vote on the jurisdiction vote.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Ms. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Volender.
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction of page one one dash zero one one three. Do we have somebody from the applicant? I want the next presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Goddessman and Hollis at thirty nine East Pearl Street in Nashville, and happy to be here this evening in person representing the owner of the property, Greeley Park Associates. The partnership is also represented by one of the partners, Jay Bradford Westgate. Mr. Westgate is heard from, he's on Zoom. Also this evening, the owner of the, the principal owner of the property adjacent to the north of this, with which you may be familiar, the First Church of Christ Scientist formerly owned it and is now in its soul. Mr. Randy Trammell is here this evening by Zoom as well. Should there be any questions, he's the direct partner. Mr. Baynard, who is the engineer of the plan, asked me to advise you he's taking the night off. I told him I had his back this evening, so he handled everything up to this point, and this is a rather unusual application, which is why I'm sort of carrying the ball. As noted, this is a proposed amendment to an existing site plan, this number one four eight O. NR one four eight O is the site plan of the law offices of Wyner and Bennett, which is at the north end of Greeley Park. And in the staff report, there's a nice historical summary of how it came to be. In any event, it received a site plan approval in nineteen eighty eight, NR one four eight O. On that plan, it was noted that there were fourteen off-site parking spaces, seven of which met one of the minimum requirements. The seven were gratuitous. The office wanted to have a total of twenty eight spaces, so it was noted on the plan fourteen of them were off-site on the adjacent church property located immediately to the north. There were two notes on that approved site plan addressing this, which was note five and note six. Note five noted the comp, count of the traffic of the parking spaces, and note six referenced the agreement as to the off-site spaces, referencing it was recorded in book four six seven L, page three twenty eight of the HCRD. If you go to the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, you will find that that document is in fact an easement deed from the First Church of Christ Scientist and Greeley Park Associates for those fourteen spaces. In it, it provides that specifically in the following language. The grantee shall not release any rights hereunder without the express written consent of the zoning administrator of the city of Nashville. As you may have a fundamental knowledge of easements, they are right over another person's property. And in this instance, the church granted easement to Greeley Park Associates, the law office property to have parking on fourteen spaces. And the city wanted to be clear whether to approve this that no one would dismiss those parking spaces without having it renewed by the city. And in this case, it required the written consent of the zoning administrator. Well, in the process of developing the church property and moving forward with approvals, the, my client at the time, Mr. Trammell, met with Greeley Park Associates, Mr. Westgate, and they discussed the need and uses of the parking spaces, and it was concluded that Greeley Park really only needed seven spaces after all these years that they've seen how much they needed. And they agreed that they would release the easement to the other seven spaces. Well, as stated in this approval and in this easement, Greeley Park Associates, as the grantee, is not allowed to release that easement right, even if they want to, without the written consent of the city. At this point, both parties approached the city and the zoning administrator, and currently the zoning administrator under the ordinance is Mr. Sullivan. And Matt discussed it with us and felt that because this was a site plan, now I may be paraphrasing him, he can speak up certainly, but because this was a site plan and it had these conditions on it and it noted the number of spaces, he really felt that this ought to go back to the board. Now, what's important to realize before we approached Matt about this, the zoning ordinance back in time required a great deal more spaces than it does now. And so, as noted in the application that was presented, at the time of approval, the site plan regulations required a total of twenty one parking spaces, and there were fourteen onsite, and the law firm wanted fourteen onsite just to be safe. As is noted now in the current regulations, the minimum number required is seven. So this site plan meets the requirements onsite and does not actually need any off-site parking. But the law firm and Mr. Trammell have reached an agreement that seven will be provided onsite. And they also recall that the church property was recently before you, and the site plan was approved by this board on May sixth, on which the seven spaces were shown as being reserved. They were excess parking, not necessary for the count of the units, the residential units proposed, and they were reserved on that site plan specifically for the use at certain times by Greeley Park Associates property. In any event, all of this was presented to Mr. Sullivan. He didn't have issues with what was being presented, but felt it should come before you in the form of an amended site plan. As you know, site plans require a number of things in your regulations, one of which is a recent survey, a number of other things showing what, what's being built. In this instance, nothing is being built on this property, one eleven Concord Street. So there are really no changes in the improvements that are out there. There's no change in what's shown on the site plan. The only thing that's changed are the notes, and obviously the notes that changed are the purpose of the plan, because there's no longer a proposal to have a office building. It's really, the purpose of the plan is to show a change in the parking agreement. And then the next number is note five, and note five dealt with the number of spaces, so that changes. And then note six dealt with the fact that there was an agreement at the court. After discussing this over with a number of lawyers and a number of staff, we came to the conclusion that the best way to present this is to take the old plan, mark it up, and specifically put on the old plan notation, and we have that plan before you, and I think it's up. If you're able to scan it, it's called amended site plan dash April two thousand twenty one. Those are the notes, and this is what really makes the change. Notes four, five, and six are now modified to read that the purpose of this plan is to amend plan NR one four eight O by terminating the existing parking easement agreement between First Church of Christ Scientist, one fifteen Concord Street, and Greeley Park Associates, one eleven Concord Street, and establish a new parking easement on one fifteen Park, Concord Street to benefit one eleven Concord Street for seven parking spaces. And that, by the way, that easement has been prepared and presented to the city as part of the process here with both site plans. Number five note is changed to now read parking required seven spaces, parking provided fourteen spaces onsite, seven off-site spaces on one fifteen Concord Street, a total of twenty one spaces. And number six, the new parking easement is to be recorded. And number six, the new parking easement is to be recorded at the HCRD Registry of Deeds. So those are really the only changes, and it just did not make a lot of sense. It imposed extreme hardship on the applicant to go out and have to resurvey, replot everything that's shown on the approved site plan, only to come back with, the only difference is those agreements. So as part of this application, you receive a document titled, "Application for Proposed Amendment to Site Plan NR one four eight O, one eleven Concord Street, Request for Waivers to Site Plan." We tried to make the case, the historical reason why we are presenting amendment, the case why we think waivers should be granted. We believe that, as I say, there is an extreme hardship, which is one of the requirements. And if the waiver is granted, the plan will still be in keeping with the current intent of the regulations and the purpose of the regulations. They will still be mapped with everything. The plan hasn't changed, no improvements are being made. And the notes are specifically showing what's the old and what's the new. So this may be in fact the most effective way to amend the site plan by having the old and the new all on one plan. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions and ask your approval of the waivers and approval of the amendment. Of course, conditioned, as the staff report says, conditioned upon termination of the old and recording of the new easement. Thank you.
Good, thanks. A couple of questions I have, I guess, is just the first waiver. I mean, this is a new plan, right? As soon as you make a modification to a plan, it kind of is a new plan. So I'm not sure. I don't know that it hurts to do the waiver, but I'm not sure. Seems like you are something. You know, I don't think there's any unintended consequences of the waiver either. But is that making sense?
It does. I mean, I would say certainly there could be an alternative interpretation that leads to no need for the waiver, but I think we feel it's probably a good idea to.
It doesn't hurt.
Yeah, for the board to consider it. And certainly, this is a unique application in this regard though.
Sure.
Yeah, it's appropriate.
Because we're using an old plan.
Yeah.
That's one question I have. Is anybody from the board, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you. Matt, as you know, the historical district commission is trying to get Greeley Park as a historical site. I would like to have you ask Carter Fogg if they would review that and also look at the law offices because they are historical sites. There are an older. And would this be, if it does, Greeley Park becomes historical, then would these, that, the parking spots also become historical? And then would it continue to the, it could continue to the building? I don't think it can continue the building without a review of that, but sure.
I guess two quick responses. One, I'm happy to talk to Mr. Fogg. The second would be that, that the way that the HDC or the historic district is bound, the HD is bound, is by the property line. So it doesn't really, by having a property within the historic district, it does not determine certain characteristics of that site that are historic. So your question about, does the parking become historic? It becomes a part of the historic district. That does not mean it itself.
Right.
Has any kind of historic character.
Right, right.
Nor does it mean that even the building itself is historic in character. It simply becomes a part of that regulatory process. But no, I'm happy to talk to Mr. Fogg and certainly you, and part of the discussions at the HDC about an expansion of the district's boundaries. But if it were to be extended, this would in fact be subject to all the regulations associated with that determination. Thank you.
Actually, I believe the building was built by Mr. Carter, who also designed the library, historical site, and a couple of other buildings in town. He was a prominent school architect throughout the state.
Had some value in the circle, but that's my comment.
Other questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Hollis may not know this, as I believe he's representing one eleven Concord Street, but would any site plan modifications be necessary for one fifteen Concord Street other than the recording of the new easement?
No, there were not. I do not, I did represent principally started with the church property. Obviously, Mr. Westgate's firm can represent themselves. But I started with the church property, and that's why we proceeded with the site plan for the church property to allow the residents identifying on that plan these seven spaces that will be out. Thank you. Thank you.
Are, are these spaces going to be designated for the other side? I was just curious because it looks like there's eight, eight spaces on the one side of a parking lot.
Yeah, if you look at the old site plan, you see a little to the very far left, it says existing paved path to church parking. That is the boundary line in the church property. And it'll be along that edge where the seven spaces have been designated on the original group, on the group plan for residences that are going to be built there. So those seven spaces are along that edge, they will be designated.
Great thinking.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just one question, and I apologize, we should have caught this earlier. The, the plan that's shown shows one late loading space in addition to fourteen other spaces in the site totaling fifteen. The plan references fourteen. Is, is it because that loading space is identified as a non, is it a parking space?
That is not a parking space. It was loading here.
Understood. Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Anybody in the public wishing to speak in opposition in case I have a question on the board? Hearing that, I'll give the board one more opportunity to speak with the applicant and their staff in the hearing. Okay, here we go. I'm going to be closing here, so going to the meeting here. Please, please, wait for me, just a couple of changes to the parking. We've seen, obviously, the group that seven spaces in the, on the other adjacent block application. Please, please, I hope that there's any issue with the waivers on my head. Anybody, have any comments, discussion? I want to make a motion. First to Weber.
New business, uh, eight twenty one dash zero one one three site plan amendment. Park place located at one eleven Concord Street. Finding that it does meet NRO one ninety, one forty six D with one waiver request, NRO one ninety two seventy nine, which requires submission and review of a new site plan is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spares intended of the regulation and stipulation number two as written.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with the two stipulations as indicated by Mr. Ballinger. Do you have a second? Take it on to Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Can we roll the vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Edward Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we have a new, other business review of tentative agenda. We're just going to propose a regional impact. We have June sixteen, twenty twenty one technical review meeting. And it's in front of us. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at these and want to make a motion? Does any of these are of potential for regional impact?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact as identified in the technical review meeting of June fourteen, twenty twenty one.
All right, so that motion by Mr. Ballinger, no projects of regional impact. Do you have a second? Mike Weber, Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's get a little vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Edward Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. That is all on the agenda. Any discussion items?
Mr. Ballinger? Mr. Chair, just generally, if you could fill us in on the landing.
I thought you might ask.
Just curious.
No, no, absolutely. So, um, so a brief summary of the landing project. We received a full response to all the third-party review comments from the applicant and their team just about one week ago from today. The responses were quite voluminous. In fact, what you received in your packet represents, I think, probably about a fifth or a sixth of the total content. As a result, the turnaround for review by our third-party reviewer of that was going to take some time. Additionally, Engineer Hudson, who was unable to join tonight, has some specific traffic, traffic recommendations to discuss with the applicant. We were unable, frankly, to coordinate a meeting before this one to actually have that discussion. And so I want to actually thank the applicant for willfully agreeing to continue another month, which actually gives us a full month of extra review time to actually have that coordination discussion. So we look hopefully towards the July fifteenth meeting and particularly towards getting some correspondence from NHDOT and HDES related to drainage hookup and also the, really just the drainage hookup that's proposed. Additionally, because of the modification for wetlands impacts, they will be returning to the zoning board in the month of July. The impact area has changed slightly, actually for the better, I think, as I hope the zoning board will indicate. But with that review also pending, we felt it best to continue additional months until that July meeting. So everything's in, in process, in short.
I, I, I figured it was that.
Yes, yes.
I appreciate that. But my only, I guess, follow-up to, to that would be it looks like in July, we only have one scheduled meeting. And, and I'm, I'm not forcing this or suggesting we do it. Is there any, has there been any discussion about a special meeting in July to? Again, I, I guess for my, my personal opinions on the matter, where I would ultimately like to get, and others may think differently, I would like to see a review memo from Hoyle Tanner saying all comments have been addressed and as well as the city staff concurring with that. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting, you know, that, that I want that. I just procedurally, that, I think, leaves the board in a better decision to make a determination. Because you could exchange comments for, for the next three, four, six months. And, and I guess I'm, I'm, you know, trying not to testify, but if you can infer a question.
I'd be happy, I'd be happy to comment on that. First, I would say that I did have a meeting of, sorry, a conversation with the chair for this meeting about the potential for a special meeting for that application, for those applications consideration. I do think that's a possibility. And I would concur, at least from, from my perspective, that the board and the others have made their concerns clear. I think already about the traffic and the drainage. At this point, it's important for the city, working with its third party, and of course, the applicant, to deliver a complete product that's ready for approval or disapproval, quite frankly. And for that reason, I think we see, we've started to see little value in update meetings, and we need to look forward to a meeting where we actually have a, a real recommendation, either in favor or against, from the city and its consultants. So we completely concur, and I think the applicant feels the fatigue of both staff and the board to some extent as far as these update meetings. And as a result, I think that's why they were so willing to continue this application to a future agenda. So the answer is yes, I think so. I think we're thinking in the same line. That's okay. No, I appreciate that, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you very much. Absolutely.
I think the August meeting comes pretty quickly too, after July fifteen.
Yes, we may have an opportunity there.
The next question I had, Matt, was just on the zoning side. So when is the zoning review of the wetland?
So the zoning board review of the wetland will be.
Just because historically, that's a holdup on our end too, that we want to see that go through before we.
It will be complete before you take any action.
Yeah.
Yes, I can, I can commit to that.
Yeah.
And that's been, that's been clearly communicated to and agreed upon with the applicant throughout the process, that they need to have all the zoning relief included in that for wetlands in place.
Yeah, only because, you know. Then we have to go back.
Sure. No, absolutely. Yep, they, they're aware that we want to wait until that's in place before it's moving forward here.
Well.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Well, um, all the other applica, you know, the applications from state, would they be completed before we get approval?
We're hoping. We're, we're hopeful, yes, we're hopeful. Uh, we do know that an AOT response is forthcoming, but I, I do want to be careful about discussing the application too much right now.
No, I'm just saying, you know, going to that, not those things.
I would say we, we want to bring forward the most complete product possible, I think, to the board, but we do know that the AOT process is, is a long, extended one. But yes, I, I think that that is the goal.
The reason I say that is because of Renaissance.
Sure. And AOT is a, was a, an item we did not have with those approvals. But no, our goal is to have, I think, really all the approvals in front of the board so that you're prepared to take action either way.
I have one other thing.
Sure.
Last year, maybe first part of, um, actually last year, before we went to Zoom, I had asked for, you know how we have stipulations that come up during our meeting and, and when our discussions, we have, and we kind of fly by the seat of our pants in writing them down and, and making motions. And I had asked like this kind of thing, typical motions that we make that, you know, we would, before the chair signs, uh, before the C of O. And if we had those written out on our plaque thing and just as stipulations or things that are common stipulations that we would be able to follow instead of kind of trying to write them out as we go.
I, my only response and hesitance there is that, you know, we do present a slate of stipulations to the board as part of the staff review memo, to the best of our ability, including, including those that are prior to building permit, prior to CO. The, the stipulations, I believe, at least in my limited experience with the board, that we struggle with are those that we make up during the meeting. And unfortunately, they're the ones that we also can't necessarily prepare for. So, so the, the, I, I, if the board is concerned that you aren't getting stipulations in the staff review memo, I think we need to pay some attention to that. But some of the more dynamic conditions that we've had to come up with during the meeting, I'm not sure how, I'm not, I, I'm open to, you know, making some changes, but I'm not sure how we really prepare for those.
Well, what I'm saying is, we kind of have a general way that we, we do make motions. And there are typical things. And so one of the things that would be good if we had like a, a guideline of stipulations that we do make, and now we can follow those instead of handwriting it out at the last minute. We have done that.
Yeah, I think there's only a couple though that have, what has been like the construction of the goal affidavit?
Okay.
Kind of process, but I think we did write that down somewhere, and it, and the, the staff is, is, is adding that more.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's like one of them that goes in and out when we do like shorten. We feel like, um, there's enough complicated drainage or design or something that we would want, uh, construction control review and stamp it up and even. Most of the time it comes down when, you know, no. But, um, I don't know. Maybe this is.
No, engineering, I agree, I, I agree with you, but engineering is already taking care of that pre to us getting it now. They understand that. And so they're doing that ahead of time, like the dumpsters I used to have. I don't even consider that because it's already being taken care of at the, the front end. And that's what I was saying, it helps us out. But there are times, I know that everyone here has, at one point in time, there was a stipulation that was added that we needed, and we kind of wrote it out by hand, and we hoped that we got it right. And that's where I'm saying a typical, um, phase, and you could just point to number two, number three, or number four stipulation on a card that has stipulation, typical stipulation, and then you can just add to that stipulation around about.
Well, I, I would say we're certainly willing to consider that. My, I guess my ask of the board is if you can think of any of those items that have come up, like the construction affidavit, similar to that.
Yeah.
If you can think of any of those other items that you've had to be dynamic.
He just did one last week.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Yep.
I guess that's a point, there's a few that are starting to come up. There's the, um, like the, the contributions to the certain funds.
The corridor funds?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Different ones like that.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah.
There's some of those that we don't know the right language for. There's a few.
Yeah, it's only a few.
That's great, I just, yeah.
Generally, the sidewalk one comes up, that's one to look at. You know, because it's generally on the staff report, but every once in a while, we add that.
Sure, sure.
The ones that have been the most prevalent have been the construction control. And you've already got one, I think, I'm sure, the way staff is putting together most of the stipulations here. You're starting from one that you've already used in the past and updating. And then the couple of corridor ones.
Oh, it's the one that you just did lots of times. You just did one. You had to write it up. I think Adam Barby had to do one that he just wrote out.
There was a completed one, it was, it was off the South Main Street, but it had to do with relinquishing title to paper streets or something like that.
Yes, I remember that. I remember that one, yeah.
That's sort of an unforeseen one that I think maybe doesn't necessarily fit a content.
The corridor funds, though, that, that makes a lot of sense that we could get from, yeah. Because you have people that are supporting that now, so, yeah.
The only thing, Mr. Chair, I may add, adding to the corridor fund, sometimes that contribution gets rolled into Mr. Mandola's comments, and sometimes it's standalone. So, I guess, I'm just not sure if it's best to have that as a standalone condition, because, you know, we, Mr. Mandola's memo dated June 10, 2021. I just didn't, I just don't know if that's a separate stipulation.
It's a, it's a great question. I think that contributions to corridor funds should be a separate stipulation, because they involve a financial contribution, much in the same way, you know, that sidewalk contributions should, in my opinion, be a separate stipulation.
That's how we usually have it, right.
And we try to pull those out, but I think that those are both really good examples. We have, we do have standard language, so we can absolutely provide that.
Sure. Well, maybe there is a little bit of confusion, but they might, they might.
That's a good suggestion.
That's great.
Good night.
Good night. I want to bring up one other thing that came up at NRPC. And it was, soundly, people hated it in their town. And it was elected commissioners, I mean, you know, planning board members, elected. And soundly, every town said it was the worst thing that ever was done.
Screened up in the Alderman.
Well, no, I don't want to give them any thought.
Well, I, I, I came from a community with elected planning board, and we were fortunate to have really, not really competitive elections and really good, tenured planning board members, but I think it can be a very dangerous thing. Yeah, that's what everybody said, and elected zoning board, too.
Yes. All right, very interesting. And when's the last meeting?
Next month.
All right, so it's over here, next month.
Yeah.
Can you bring me cake?
We were, we were discussing a potential social event after next week's meeting, so please put that on your radar.
Yeah, we have kind of a standard process.
We do.
Is that a standard condition? No, that's. No, we were, please do put that on your calendars. We were thinking of doing that. We'll try to get some info out of it, too. So, I want to thank you for all your contributions.
All right, anything else?
Thank you, everyone, for making this work. Appreciate it. We'd like this for at least another meeting or so.
Before you go, I want to tell you that people at the NRPC are jealous of Nashville's.
They should.
People weren't trying to put it together.
Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott McClaire?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.